Shall we begin?
Yep.
All right. We call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order on March 19th, 2018. Selectmen's meeting, open session, is subject to being videotaped. Your voice and image may be recorded. We have March 12th minutes.
Motion to approve, second?
Any comments, questions, corrections? Okay. Hearing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a common vicuellers license and license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages. This is for Kadoba at the...
That's just a change of manager.
It's just a change of manager, okay.
Your motion to approve?
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any comments or questions?
No.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have approval of step and level for various employees. We did go over, I did the things that were open on this for some fire...
Right.
Issues. However, I did note in the communications from the FinCom that they are suggesting a rollback of all compensation increases to 2.7%. I, we've obviously gone through, and we've approved a whole bunch that are higher than that. And so I think before we sign this, we need to discuss whether we agree with that and maybe even, you know, I was trying to think, how we implement this at this point, whether we go back and sign amended ones, if we do that, whether we attach a memo saying that they're all that, and, you know. But anyway, I wondered what people's thoughts were.
So would this be the correction that we were talking about back when we met on Saturdays?
I think it would go back to a more reasonable rate of increase.
I mean, we had discussed, we had discussed really taking a look for this next fiscal year at that whole system of step and COLA and putting together something that looked more like, you know, a cost of living and a merit, which was not, you know, which was granted in some other, other way or not. And when we discussed things at the beginning of the process, we'd come to the conclusion that we wanted to do that for the next year, but we didn't want to...
Right.
Yeah, move the, the goalposts, you know, late in the game for this fiscal year. But FinCom has now come back with a fairly solid recommendation to limit those to 2.7%. So that's where we are.
My only thought would be was there, there were a few on there who were actually requesting merit, like three people, I think, and we might want to visit those.
You mean, yeah, more than one step?
Well, there were some, like, I think the Assistant Treasurer was actually to get her more up to where she should have been.
Mm-hmm.
And perhaps there were, there were one or two more that, that maybe fell into that category that might, it wasn't a whole bunch of them, but there were some that we might want to at least look at. Overall, I would think the 2.7 makes sense.
That's a good point.
They already moved many of them to 2.7.
Who did?
The FinCom. So...
No, I understand. They did. As a rec, I mean, what they've done is they've, they've put a recommended line in here that's lower than the requested, and our, the numbers we gave would show up on the requested column.
Historically, that sheet that you have is strictly personnel. It's not the Selectmen's recommendations for pay. It's what, after you review the evaluations, doesn't mean you can't continue doing what you're doing, but that spreadsheet was just reporting out what the...
No, I understand, but what I'm saying, I mean...
Beyond that, yeah.
It says a number of figures that are higher than the 2.7%.
Doesn't work.
That, so I realize it's internal, but, you know, why sign it if it's got a bunch of things that...
How many are we talking about?
I actually started marking that spreadsheet up, and then I stopped because I didn't, that's not historically what the sheet had been, so I didn't want to go doing it, but...
No, I mean, I raised it because we had to talk about this, and this was a good time So I think the first question is, do we, as a board, wish to, because we can, you know, you can go out with a requested budget that is higher than the FinCom recommended budget, and then the issue is, you know, you move one or the other figure on the floor, and you discuss it on the floor of town meeting. So, you know, that's a possibility, it's an ugly possibility, but it's a possibility.
It could be a entire fortnight in town meeting.
Or do we, or do, or do we want to, at this point, accept the recommendation of FinCom with, as you say, maybe a, a small number of adjustments that we could try to identify and maybe vote on next, next week?
Yeah. And the other piece of that, just so that, they can't actually drop the police wages to 2.7 because that's contracted.
Right.
You can't, and they had done that, so I know that that will, they did actually do that.
Was the police three?
I can't remember exactly what the number was.
Because I thought the police was a figure or, a certain figure, or the total of the step and the COLA. We can look at it.
Yeah. I just know that I talked to Tom on Saturday, and whatever they sent back over to him, he had to go back and say, no, you can't actually do that.
Okay, if Tom, if Tom looked at it, then he knows.
Yeah.
Yeah. As I say, I know it was an alternate figure, and there was a floor, and I think it may have been 3%.
Yeah, so I'm assuming it would have, it has to be at least a 3%.
Yeah.
And that's what he told us, so there was already a discrepancy with that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, thoughts?
I'm thinking if we could get a, a listing of the ones that would change, and then I think I'd have a better feel for next week.
Okay.
I'm, in general, I believe I'm also thinking 2.7 is fine, but I want to make sure it's not for other reasons that the increase is on the sheet.
And this, this list actually tells us this, right?
That's requested versus what they recommended, yes.
Yeah. This already tells us.
But it's not broken out?
Yeah.
Well, it's broken out by category.
Not, not position.
So is that, that's on the, is that on the Google?
It's their Google link to their budget.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, you know, you could tell a lot from this. I mean, for instance, when you look at accountant, right?
Yep.
There's accountant salary, there's wages part-time. I mean, there's always two people there, you can tell that. Same with the assessors.
Well, if there's just a few, then what, we could just talk about it tonight?
Same with the, yeah, same with the treasurer.
Was it, it was, I think it was Amy and Kate, right?
One's salary, one's part-time wages, so that one is separate accountant.
And I can't think if there was anyone else, but those, those two, I think were...
And then this last column gives the dollar impact of that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I think they're showing, yes.
Yeah.
Do you want me to print that for everybody?
Yeah, why don't you? That would be good, because then we can take a...
Well, I don't, I don't actually need a print set, I can pull it up.
Yeah, but if you'd make one for me, too, so that I can take some notes as we're talking. All right. Yeah, I mean, we might as well just go through these general government things tonight. We don't have any meetings and...
Nothing pressing.
Yeah. So we can just go through, and even the expenses and talk about that, okay?
Okay. So even as a compromise, we could maybe do just one step for those who are supposed to get merits or something like that, and consider that?
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of quibble with the use of merit, because we don't have a merit system. Those were particular adjustments that people required for market rate, is sort of what I understood, right?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
I'm maybe not using the right language.
Yeah.
It seems like they ought to, you know, because they're specifically called out as...
Below?
Yeah.
Market.
Usually when somebody wants a salary adjustment, they, I mean, the proof that they're on the low side compared to police.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure with Kate, we got that.
It's so long ago.
Yeah, well, it's just, yeah, and it's over such a period of time that...
Yeah, you're right, probably did.
Thanks.
You can hold up that.
Actually, could I have one?
Yep. Here you go.
Can I take that?
Yes.
This is the other sheet, if you want the other tabs from what the FinCom has online.
All right, well, let's, let's go through this one. Yeah, let's go through government. All right, so, the Selectmen's salary, that's fine, that's to 2.7. The next one is the, our admin, who's sitting right over there, and this, this figure, the recommended change, is, I think in this case, it doesn't matter, but is that the, the recommended, is that the recommended diminishment? Is that, so that's, that's what they're taking out?
They suggested no change to what you asked in the budget.
Hmm?
They suggested no change.
Right. No, no, I understand that, so...
So it's 2687, the increase is what?
All right, I see. So this change is not the change that they made to our request, this is the change versus last year, okay? That's what that column means. Okay.
So why did they go across the board with everyone else and not do that one?
They didn't do it with everybody.
They didn't do it with everybody? Okay.
Okay. All right. I'm okay with the recommended change, they didn't make a change there. The expenses, their explanation for taking out, the $10,000 was to take out one of our expenses for search, but they indicated that they would be willing to do a reserve fund transfer.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't really have a problem with that.
Okay.
They, they brought down the accountant's salary. I would say, I mean, we gave June that salary because we were basically giving everybody a, you know, a step in COLA. We have made a number of adjustments in the past, you know, over the past probably four years, decided to bring June up to more of a market rate, so I, I think we can, the recommendation there would be my sense. And I would also say, with respect to the part-time wages, I mean, again, there's no, there was no particular market adjustment or anything with respect to that. The accountant's assistant, which would be the wages part-time there.
Did she, want to bring her up a couple of steps?
Well, she brought her up 7.4, so maybe that is one that was a market.
Yeah, I thought that was a...
You think so?
I, I thought it was something with Amy, but I can't remember specifically what it was.
Let's check that.
Might be.
All right, so let's hold that one up. And they didn't make any changes to the expense line there. Okay.
I think they gave a couple of steps to the assistant, one of the assistants' assessors.
That is, that is the one, Assistant Assessor.
Right.
And they gave a 4% raise there. That one, we really have to go back to the Board of Assessors on, because they're the ones who set that, and I know they had some considerable discussions on that one.
They confirmed it. They did come back and confirm 4%.
Hmm?
They came back and confirmed 4%.
Oh, I understand that, but that's what I'm saying, is they negotiated to 4%. If it's being knocked down to 2.7%, it's the assessors who need to look at that, not, not us.
Not us.
And I would actually, I would say that with respect to all of the, the assessors' positions, those should go to the assessors, and they should, they should, they should determine it. Reveal expenses, same. All right, I would say, same with the treasurer. That we should, we should get input from them this week on that, okay?
It looks like they already did sort of take into account that he was trying to raise her.
Yeah, with 5.7 instead of 12.
Yeah, as I say, but it's just, he's the one who requested, so he's the one who should approve it. And I would say, go to Dennis on the, I don't, hang on, there's nothing.
Wasn't that close to $18,000 in that incentive line? Wasn't that where the... I meant to, I wanted to talk to him today to get that one straightened out.
Okay.
I spent the morning with the ferrier, so...
With, oh...
My horses got their toes done this morning.
All right.
So I could not get over.
Well, do you want to talk to Dennis about those?
Talk to Dennis.
And also talk, talk to him, because you're right, I mean, I think we've lost something in here, because we were going to get the savings from, and it's not reflected here.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's what it is, is the incentive there goes back to the town, which is a considerable amount of money.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, okay. So do you want to talk to Dennis about those two?
I can talk to Dennis about those two.
I will take it upon myself to talk to June about hers, okay? Legal expenses, I mean, I think they're, that's really the same approach they're taking as they did with respect to the Selectmen's expenses, and I'm willing to go with that. I think everybody is, if they're willing to do a reserve fund transfer if we need it.
Okay.
Okay.
Is the personnel expenses what we were using for possible HR?
Yeah, that's what that $5,000 is for.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And that's under the Select Board budget now?
Nope.
Mm-hmm.
Nope.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, it's on the second page.
Yeah. And I would like to talk to them about keeping that in, because if, I mean, at very least, we've said we want to look at, you know, redoing the, the compensation structure, because the step and COLA is not working at this point.
Yeah.
So I, I think I'm going to ask them if we can put that one back in, is that fair enough? Or, or maybe put...
That is also under the request that Tim Wheeler is making to CMRPC for the consultant, for HR.
Yeah.
For HR?
But, yeah.
Yeah, if we, if we can get it.
If we can get it, but, yeah.
Maybe we can go back with 2,500 on that?
Okay. Yeah.
You actually don't have $5,000 in that this year.
What's that?
It was an 18 request, and then this year, it's not included to have contracted HR services. So that's, that's the present year.
Oh, okay. We didn't actually request that under there this year.
All right, there...
I thought we were just leaving it, though. That's, was my understanding, but...
Well, we signed something they didn't request.
Personnel, but not Selectmen, so it's not otherwise somewhere else.
Okay. So the 5,200 is?
Personnel committee.
Okay.
And that's where the 5,000 was left, this year, and that's what you were asking to keep it connected.
And they said that, I mean, they, they were calculating as we had requested it. I think I'd like to at least request 2,500, so we can, you know, maybe get some help with respect to, how do people feel about that?
I think we should.
Okay. I, I know I want to get it done, however we go about it, I think there's a need, so the problem is figuring out where things go out then.
Are you going to talk to the Finance Committee, or would you like me to?
Well, we can send them a note about these things. I would not be able to attend a Wednesday night meeting, because I have an industry group coming in Wednesday afternoon, and I have to host a dinner, and then I have an 8:00 meeting that starts the next morning, so I'm probably going to actually stay in Boston if the weather looks bad, then.
If we get through this and find we have a lot of things to talk about, I don't mind going to meeting and talking to them.
Yeah, and I mean, we can delete, you know, we, and I think ahead of time, we should give them a list of the things that we'd like to adjust.
Concerns?
Yeah. Okay?
Okay.
Data systems, they didn't touch. Clerk is not our hunt, elections not our hunt, registration not our hunt, CONCON not our hunt, Planning Board, Court of Appeals, Agricultural Committee. I mean, they've only cut it by 125 dollars from the previous.
I guess that's maybe because they didn't spend it, or...
Yeah, I don't know, it looks, well, it actually looks like that was their request, so, okay, that one, I think is fine. Wages, what they decided to do was fund here one half-year with the assumption that, keeping in mind that this is starting in, in July, that by January 1st, there would be enough money in the revolving fund to pay her, which I think is okay, we just need to be sure that, that revolving fund is appropriately authorized this year, okay? We have to check that, all right. I mean, I'm, I'm sort of okay with doing that, if we really, if it, if it comes down to it, and, you know, I, we could, you know, we can deal with that one, it arises, and make a decision, but I don't think that's necessarily unreasonable, okay?
Okay.
Expenses, they haven't touched, electricity, they haven't touched...
Did they drop electricity by 18,000?
Hmm?
Or is that good?
Didn't we determine that the Town Barn was going to add a significant amount to electricity?
Okay. Yeah, oh, you're right, they did.
Yeah, and, and just, I guess, saying that it's not going to happen doesn't make it not happen.
Mm-hmm.
It's a nice thought, but...
Well, we should question them on that, I think we, you know, I don't know how much they have in the reserve fund.
Yeah, so this was, yeah, this was June's estimate, so...
Yeah.
They have 90,000, or they're, they haven't voted on it, but that's what they've been having.
Hmm?
The reserve fund, they've been putting 90.
Yeah.
And I don't think they voted on it, but...
I think on that one, you know, we, we should probably push back and say, we have every expectation, it's, you know, it's going to be higher, and unless they salt up the reserve fund, we suggest they not do that. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, well, I think people get frustrated when we don't put things in the budget that are large expenses that we are pretty sure are...
Mm-hmm, and that one, I think we're pretty sure. The, the previous one, you know, the part-time wages, I think that, you know, that one is bona fide open. But our estimates are 18,000 more, so I'd say we request that they restore that one, all right?
Yep.
All right. And telephony, right, that's good, that goes down. Can we take a short break from this and talk to our visitor?
Mm-hmm. Can I just take that back?
How are you, George?
Good evening.
Did you see that I'd emailed that inquiry? Is it here?
It should be in there.
No, that's fine, I just haven't gotten very deeply into this yet, so... Come on up, if you like. Yeah. Why don't you start while I look for that thing?
Well, you know, I'm here for a couple of reasons. First and foremost, I think it's probably the insurance issues with people using their own vehicles. We've had answers, Mary had an email, we have sort of an answer on how that would work, but it's somewhat nebulous, and it just came to a head, because while I was away, the bus needed to be repaired.
Yep.
And so it fell on people to take their own vehicles to transport people for a week or so while I was gone. And that raises the issue of not an occasional friendly neighbor type of, gee, I can take them to a commitment to...
And they're dispatched by the Council on Aging, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Yep. Okay.
Yes. And they're all volunteers, they're all signed up as volunteers through our volunteer program, recorded and had Cory checks and all that jazz, but that still doesn't, when it get, you know, when the rubber hits the road and somebody has an accident, it's not clear who pays for what, and I think that needs to be fleshed out somehow before we, before we get into trouble. And I think that needs to be fleshed out somehow before we get into trouble. Sooner or later, something's going to happen. We've had accidents, but they've all been trivial.
Yes, and we'd like to keep them that way, but...
So that would be item number one.
Yep, and she's printing. I had put out an inquiry.
Oh, good.
And I'm glad you're here because I was going to email it to you and run it by you before we sent it out tomorrow, but I didn't get it done until late this afternoon.
All right. So there's that. And I think, you know, I think we really need to, I've looked, I mean, asked, a lot of other towns don't do it at all.
Don't do...
They don't do...
Don't have people privately transport.
Mm-hmm.
But we sort of started doing that before we had a bus.
Do any other towns do that that you've identified?
I think so, but, you know, I have...
Yeah.
I thought Harvard had a pretty extensive, but it was run outside of the town. It wasn't run through the Council on Aging.
It wasn't a town-sponsored thing, so...
Thanks.
And I think they may have actually purchased a rider to cover those people the way Harvard was doing it. There are a couple of communities that do this not as part of the town government process, and how they do it is kind of, you know, nebulous. I don't know. There's no real way to get straight answers on that.
I actually have a contact who might, I think Judy Westerling ran the program over in Harvard.
Yes, but that's ancient history now, so...
Okay, so it's defunct.
Things have changed immensely with this, with the elderly and all of the ramifications of the program, which is just, you know, growing leaps and bounds.
Well, there you have the outline. Do you have it? This is what I wanted to put out to council and to our insurance carrier. Obviously, some of it is more appropriately addressed by council. We might even want to talk to CMRPC to see if they have any information on this, but so does that seem to cover the waterfront?
I think that's, you know, it has the gist of what we're looking for.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I would, I wouldn't feel good about telling people that they can kind of do this based on hearsay or by an email.
Oh, no, we want to nail it down, and I mean, I think this is what we're trying to do here.
And if it costs money, it costs money, but, you know, you've got to do what you've got to do.
And I think I've covered each of the...
Of the contingencies.
Yeah, each of the contingencies. I put, I added paid staff because, you know, sooner or later, you know...
Sooner or later, yeah. Probably sooner than later.
And I think that's probably the easiest answer anyway, but just for completeness, I put that.
Okay.
So I think...
Okay, so you can proceed with that, and we'll see where that goes.
Yes, yep.
All right.
George and I had talked, when was it, Thursday or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, when I was in here, and I said I'd try to put that together for this evening.
So that I would consider to be a higher priority than most everything else. And the other thing we did, the buses constantly a nemesis in repair, and so we've been putting off non-critical things, but every so often, something comes up that can't be postponed. In this particular instance, it was, it wouldn't start because of a switch, so that took a week to get fixed because the whole transmission had to come out to get the switch.
Oh, man.
Oh, geez.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's like, anyway, we probably ought to start looking at another solution for transporting people, or an additional solution maybe might be a better way of saying it. We certainly, on many days, we certainly could use more than one vehicle because we're called upon to be in two places at once frequently. So we might, I mean, the way we're covering that now is the bus goes one way with its one or two passengers, those particularly that need a lift or something, and a private vehicle takes the other person the other way because they're going in opposite directions at the same time. So it wouldn't be a bad idea to look at that as a possibility as a future.
What about, you know, talking to like WRTA?
Yeah, there is also Montez...
Montezot is the other one, yeah.
And Worcester Regional, although we pay a certain amount, a small trillions to them, and we do, there's some a small amount that's paid to belong to their thing.
It's under $100.
Yeah, it's nothing, but technically, we belong to that. But there, for whatever reason, we're not much into Worcester County where, we're on the dividing line where we, half of the town is in Worcester County and the other one's in Montezot for that busing stuff. And we get into a conflict there because one can't go out of their jurisdiction. So if you have a Worcester bus, you can't go out of the Worcester County stuff, and that means you can't go to Marlboro where the hospital is, or you can't go to Westboro, you know. So, and the same applies the other way around with Montezot, except that they're, you know, they're fine to the northern county, but they, once again, we can't go across the county line because assumably, I don't have their real answer, but I'm assuming that it's based on their insurance carrier, you know, because they have a geographic area that they're limited to. So it doesn't serve us terribly well if that, in fact, is the case because virtually, oh, 80% of what we do, maybe even a little more, is Worcester County, but we do occasionally go north to Leavenster, Pittsburgh, and we frequently go to Marlboro Hudson, so, you know.
Right, but, I mean, if the, you know, if even half of the Worcester County could be taken care of with that, that would certainly ease up some of the burden on the rest, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it's a scheduling problem too, though, because you've got, you know, well, you can't take that bus because that bus can't go that way, it can only go this way.
No, I understand that, but if you have, for instance, if you have, you know, an established weekly trip in which some, you know...
Today...
People go to...
Today is a good example. Today, we went from Berlin to Worcester to Westboro, back to Berlin to Marlboro, back to Westboro, back to Worcester, back around. So we've been in all three jurisdictions.
Do we have any, you know, any events, any trips that are within a county and are regular and recurring?
You could make it that way if it said you can't go on the bus unless you go into Worcester County. That's the only way you could do that.
No, no, all I meant was if, let's say, is there a trip to a particular grocery store that happens on a regular basis, or, you know, a Y.M.C.A. or something like that that happens on a regular basis again and again? That's the kind of thing I'm asking.
The majority of the transports are medical, and they're, and they go in and out of county because we...
Because it's more cost-efficient, you're going from Worcester to Westboro.
Oh, of course, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, you know, this morning would be drop one at one hospital, go to another, we'll drop another one off at another medical facility, then go back and get another one to go to a third.
And the one to Worcester is getting the ride to Westboro and...
They're both on at the same time. They get dropped, yeah, yeah. It's quite a chessboard.
Are there any, I was going to say, are there any other communities similar to us that are struggling with the same thing? Do we know?
I assume so, but I don't know.
Okay. I wonder if there's anybody we can talk to.
We do a great deal more than a lot of communities do. So we have door-to-door service and sometimes door-to indoor service, and sometimes we have to physically get people out of a building because they can't, in their wheelchair, they can't get down three stories, four stories, and run an elevator and crew for electric doors and all that stuff by themselves, so there's a lot to it besides just driving the bus, so...
I kind of foresee that at some point, this bus isn't going to be operating. Would you agree? I mean...
It's going to break, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, well, it did for a week already, so...
Right, I mean, we seem to be having problems. Is there another way to do the transporting? I mean, what if we just did private car?
You could do that, except for...
I don't mean right now.
Well, we've got to get these questions answered before we...
I don't mean right now, but that might increase...
I mean, we, the private car is a great solution for a great deal of it, but one wheelchair throws that into chaos because you're, I mean...
I think there's a lot with this that needs a long-term solution, I think, that we can't, we can't figure out sitting here tonight.
No, not in five minutes, no.
I mean, that's part of the reason why I was requesting, you know, help with council on aging because...
Yeah, absolutely.
There's a lot going on there that needs a long-term solution.
And there is at least one meeting a week someplace that I should be attending, or somebody who's directing the program should be attending because we're missing out on a lot of stuff that just can't, can't be had.
Well...
Programs and stuff like that.
And thinking, I mean, I knew a lot of that stuff about WRTA and Montezot, but we are on television tonight, and that's the question that people will ask if we're putting money into local, you know, resources or whatever, and so I thought at least we'd talk that out briefly so people could recognize...
I'm certainly not adverse to running the flag up again and seeing if they would like to respond to our query about, you know, a bus, both of them, for that matter, either Worcester or Montezot.
Or both.
Yeah, or both.
Yeah, not a problem as far as I'm concerned, but we've always gotten that kind of a nebulous answer about, well, you can't use it where you need to because we're on the borderline of Metro, Metro West.
Well, I think as a first actionable step, we'll go out and we'll get the answer to these questions. When we get the answer to these questions, then we'll be able to assess the private driver aspect, and that, you know, that's certainly one immediate big piece that...
We just today added another possible driver on, got Cory checked on and so forth, so we have another bus driver perhaps that is going to be able to help out as well. So that's, of all the problems, that's the biggest, is getting personnel to do this.
Yeah.
In fact, I think maybe we have to rethink the original idea of the work-off program. That works fine for those that it works for, but you can't get, I've got drivers in Clinton that would come over, but they're not going to come over here for four bucks an hour less than they're getting in Clinton. And they would come over and do it for me a day, but, you know, they're not going to do that for, but they do it for equal money, but not for...
So those are paid part-time staff?
They are. In every other town, they're paid part-time staff.
Yeah, and it's more than we pay for work-off consistently across the board.
Of course, of course.
So somehow, we may need to look at that, too, and see what we can do.
And, you know, I mean, those things don't have to be equal because even somebody who comes in and does administrative work and everything, they're, you know, they're working off at $10 an hour, and obviously, if they, you know, took that job, you know, they wouldn't be...
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, that's what's on the...
All right, well, we will push this out to the insurance carrier and to council. We'll see if we can get some input from, you know, next week.
Sounds good.
All right.
Sounds good. While I'm here, how are we doing with the telephone poll?
I haven't gotten the answer from the inquiry that I put out, that I talked to you about, which I might as well say since you brought it up. I did go out to say, I understood that they, you know, were fairly busy this March, you know, with a number of things, and I did go out to ask, and this was last week, whether, assuming no hugely significant weather event...
Like the Norristar coming in on Wednesday?
Yeah, like that.
Yeah, like that.
Whether we, you know, we found out on it, you know, being done by the end of March was what, and I went out last week, so that was mid-March, and I haven't heard.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
We'll rattle that saber some more then. Thank you very much.
All righty. Thanks, George.
You're welcome.
And you're right, some of those answers could be inferred from what we asked about the firefighters, but we might as well go out with that.
Yeah, it's not a leading sample.
Yeah, all right. All right, then we have public safety and... That the chief is going to talk to them directly?
Yeah, he already did.
He already did, okay.
Yeah, you can't do that.
And they understood that, or sort of?
I'm kind of surprised they knew that.
I think Scott actually knew that. I'm guessing it was late night.
And they've taken 40 out of fire wages, right, roughly?
Yeah, I think the fire chief had asked to go in and speak with them this weekend or this week about that, just to make sure that...
Because those are, you know, that's largely new position stuff, so it obviously hasn't impacted. Fire chief will talk to them, okay?
Yeah, I think it was just making sure that things aligned with...
No change to the building inspector? No, they have no change to our requests for the expenses for the building inspector.
And I did talk to Joe about the, he actually built in the cost of the software into the new fee structure.
Oh, okay.
He was thinking about that back then, so he said he actually built that into the fee structure that we approved earlier.
So he's amortized that somehow into a new fee structure, okay? All right, then.
And he also looked over his budget and said he could not get it any later.
Hmm?
He looked over his budget and said he could not get it any later.
The communications payroll expenses, is that the regional dispatch center?
Yes.
Yes. Is the chief going to talk to them? Because I don't, you know, I mean, that's an assessment that we get.
I believe the chief, because he goes to all the admin meetings, knew what we were, we haven't voted on it, but we, he knew what the ballpark was, so I'm hoping he's...
Does this, does the FIDCOM recommendation reflect that, or does our request reflect that?
I believe that he discussed that with them, and that was the number.
Okay.
Don't, I'm not 100%, but I believe that he said that he had discussed that with him, and that was the number.
Okay, so we need, okay, so that's okay, if that's okay. All right.
I can double-check on that, too.
Yeah, that would make sense, but just because I'm not...
All right, the highway salary is, they left the same, but that was fine. Full-time wages, they're knocking down. We should talk to Keith about that, but I think Keith has done some adjustments in the past couple of years. You want to talk to Keith about that one?
Yep.
Okay. I think those are the ones that are, are bailiwick. I just want to be sure. I just want to be sure. I know Dennis had finally gotten the health figures, but I thought the percentage was this, and I'm, I skipped a couple pages. I'm down to miscellaneous benefits and insurance because I was skipping those stuff that wasn't our. The one thing that pops out to me is we did have the 10.4 figure, which was a hedging figure. I believe Dennis said to me that the increase was 6% and change when I spoke to him last week, and they show a 5%. If you're going in to talk to Dennis, do you want to check that figure too?
So which line item is it?
That is 106. And I do, I mean, the, the 10.4% was what we had put in, you know, as a recommendation. We didn't have final numbers. Dennis did indicate to me when I spoke to him on Thursday that came in, and I'm pretty sure he said it was 6% and change. So can you check that one with him? As long as you're in to see him anyway? All right. Okay, please check. That's the same, that's the same, that's the same, that's the same. Okay. Other things, they did not change our recommendations. And they didn't change for Medicare or for property liability insurance, okay?
Those are pretty much are what they are, right?
So I will talk to June. And you'll, you'll talk to Highway, right?
Yep.
On that one. And you'll talk to Dennis about the treasurer's ones, right?
Do you think Mary should send an email to the assessors just to give them a heads Or maybe they're already where anyway?
I suppose it wouldn't hurt to just say. We note that. Yeah, just maybe send him a quick note saying, please, please note that the FinCom recommendation affects the 4% assistant salary that they had just negotiated and they should.
Right.
Look at that. Okay. All right then. So that's, that's that.
Can you report back to you or just, just, that's their own?
No, just a, just a tickler. I mean, that is there. All right. Okay, I sat down with Chief Z last week and then with Mary afterwards and we. We got all of the various positions in their appropriate places on this. This is the personnel classification spreadsheet. So I would take a motion to approve that. I mean, we were adding some of the fire positions.
Okay. Your motion to approve?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the next item was just the, the, the sign, the signing and the approval. We'd already done this in the budget process, but this is just on the personnel form, which, if you remember, I said, got put away at the holidays and I finally dug it out. So this is for June.
Which we've talked about.
Yeah, which we had talked about. But the present is 64,795. We'd requested 67, which was a 4.8%, but we had just decided that we would go with the 2.7. So I would ask your approval. I mean, and we've talked about the rating and everything. It just.
Okay.
It was after when I went in to talk to her about it that it got lost, so.
Are you, are you doing the 2.7 on this then too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
So a motion to approve the, the personnel report and the salary recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next is the town office closure and employee notification policy. This is to vote to formally approve it, correct?
Yep.
Well, let's get that motion on the floor and we can talk about having gone through it a couple of times.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Comments or questions?
After this last storm, I did talk or email with Tom Galvin to find out whether the robo-call can actually leave a message, because if you don't answer it.
I didn't get one either, yeah.
It, it doesn't leave a message. And he thought it was set up to do that, but he would check into it. That was the only issue that I had.
And I can follow up on Thursday. I see him on Thursday, so.
Because if you missed the phone call, that's it. The message is gone.
Yeah, a couple of things. Might had a couple of comments that there are people who live a ways away and they'd like to come in early and they wondered about the 7 o'clock. And I said, well, I think that the, the whole 7 o'clock thing is difficult because, I mean, we, that, that first storm was.
It was weird.
And, and the comparison between the first and the second storm. The first storm, we, we felt it was too close to call the night before. And even at 6:45 in the morning, we were able to determine that it was probably safe for people to be in during the sort of regular hours. And so we did not close. And then we had a second call at 1 o'clock and we determined at that point that we would close the offices at 4:00 because that's when, you know, it was really going to start to.
Right.
Come down and that we would open them late. We would open them at 10:00 the following morning to give Keith and the fire department, you know, a good, a good chance to clean it up. And, you know, the, that worked. The second storm, I would say we probably could have called the night before.
Yep.
And we certainly did call at, you know, at 6:45. So the question is, I mean, do, do we leave this by 7:00 and we say that, you know, we'll call it as early?
As possible.
Okay. I'm just saying, because, you know, these are the.
Definitely, yeah.
These are the inputs.
If you know earlier, I think it was just to let people know that if there was a question, it would be by 7:00 that morning. If you didn't hear by 7:00 that morning, then you should assume you're coming into work.
Right.
Yeah.
But if you want to call it the day before, then I think that's perfectly valid.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Like I said, on that first call, I said, you know, that first call, that storm was so weird and, you know, they were saying 20 miles one way or the other meant, you know.
These storms are not cooperating very well with the brand-new weather policy.
Exactly. I said, I said when we were on the call.
Odd case possible.
Yeah. I was like, three guys who aren't weathermen trying to deal with a situation that the weatherman can't figure out. And we had to call it. So, all right, so I don't think we need to change that.
Okay.
The other thing that we did is I, I let Mary know as soon as we had the call and Mary put it on Facebook. And I wonder if that should be a part of the policy.
Yeah, I also think that should probably go out too. I think all of the messaging for that should go out from police.
Okay.
And we can actually make, rather than giving them the password for the Facebook, we can actually make them an admin on the Facebook page.
Okay.
So if they have something that needs to be cross-posted, it's very easy to do that. So I will also talk to Chief Galvin about that, if that makes sense to you.
That's fine. Then do we need a, do we need a point here that by 7:00 or whatever, we will have something on somewhere?
Social media?
Probably the, the main point, it says social media if possible, but the main point for that, I think, is the police because the robo-call is coming out for that. The reason we didn't solidify everything in there is if something doesn't get done, we don't want to get, we don't want to be liable for not doing something that we said we were going to do.
Okay.
So the thought was not to solidify it and try to do our best on those other things.
Okay. That's fine. All right.
Eloise also asked that it be an email. Remember when Eloise stuck her head in the other day, she was saying that not all of the employees check Facebook. I mean, maybe she just didn't get a robo-call. I know.
That's what the call's for, so.
And then June said she didn't get the call. She got the tail end of the call because the message duration wasn't long enough. So that's just a detail to be worked out. But Eloise asked for an email to go out.
Meaning, uh, from?
Whoever.
She doesn't have a cell phone, I.
I don't know if she does or not.
Okay.
I don't think she's on the list with the cell phone number.
I really think we can't do everything for everybody. You know, the robo-call, if we decide the robo-call is the main thing, that should be the main thing. We need to obviously make sure it's working correctly, but we can't.
Yeah, that was really.
Promise to do an email and a Facebook and a robo-call and a, you know, a postage-stamped letter. We just.
No, I mean.
It's too much.
I, I would say this, we, we should do what we say we're going to do. I don't actually think, you know, an email is that ridiculous if you had a fixed list.
Yeah.
I, I'm very fond of the idea of a, of a postcard, but. It would have to be appropriate and have like polar bears on it or something. Yeah, I guess, I, I don't know, why, why would she have not gotten a robo-call if we have a number for her?
I don't know if you, I don't.
I've got a.
Call her number being on the list.
I've got a number for her. It's on there.
Yeah.
Maybe it was just an additional suggestion.
Specifically to get it.
I know of two employees who didn't get the call. Actually, didn't even get it.
Who didn't?
The veterans agent in the Sardells for both Mr. and Mrs. because.
Yeah, I can make sure that Tom has the, the list that.
The one thing I wondered about is there. Because, you know, actually, I, I thought the main reason for this was really so you didn't have, you know, the public coming down here when it wasn't troubled and, you know, all of that. None of this addresses a notification to the public that this building is closed.
Yeah.
That was, that seems to me to be the hole in, and that's why I raised the social media issue, you know?
Yeah. And that does go out on the police. They, they put it up when they make the robo-call, they put it on the police Facebook page.
Yeah.
We should also, I mean, really, it should be in all the places that the school notifies if we can do that, just as a closing. I personally don't know the mechanism of doing that yet, but it really should be in those places.
I think they do robo-calls to every parent.
Well.
They may.
Tom Galvin was, was worried about using the robo-call for, he didn't want to make them nuisance calls.
No. Oh, no, no, I'm not suggesting we go out to the whole public with a robo-call.
Because, yeah.
You know, I mean, I, that might have some sense for the school, you know, because a lot of people are going there. But for the number of people that wander in here every day, you know, and when the weather's bad, it would be nice to have something either on the website or on the main town Facebook page that would indicate that.
Do you want to make this sentence stronger?
Well, no, that, if, as long as one, the town or public safety puts it on Facebook, it does dump onto the homepage.
It does.
It does.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a window that shows announcements.
Yeah.
It may not be super obvious, but it is, there is a streaming.
And it's possible to, you know, there is money in the budget to try to put a new website together. So there may be an easier mechanism to put a banner across the top or whatever going forward if, if we do that. But with the way it is now, our updating is not reliable enough other than that window. We could have just put a banner up because Garth would not be that available.
Sure. And I, you know, I, I'm not opposed to this statement in the policy, but I do think as a practical application of that sentence, we should have something, you know, out there that would show on the main Facebook page and the webpage.
The police put that up the same time.
Okay.
And they are emergency management, so that does make sense.
That sounds fine then. All right.
The keeper of that.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the office closure and employee notification policy?
Aye.
Aye. This is. This is a letter to Richard Sardell. It's confirming that we will appoint a successor to him as of July 1st. And it's our understanding that he will continue to serve as collector under the Mass General laws, which say that until, until a successor is appointed, somebody will continue to serve in that position.
Now, does that work? Because I know that, that Eloise seemed to think that that position was no longer valid after.
She visited to say just that again. She can, she said that again.
I, I don't think, I don't think the position exists as an elected position after the new election.
So we have to do an appointment?
We have to do an appointment.
What is his?
If he's gonna.
Issue with being appointed?
I mean. I guess we can go back to the original plan, but, I mean, we already went through legal with this and.
Well, that was for an entire year ago.
Yeah, but it's pushing the same.
That was completely different.
But this, I have to say, this question was not answered in the legal stuff.
Okay.
If Ellie has an issue on this.
She, she does.
Yeah. And, and actually, the, the council, the council's opinion said that if we did nothing, he would continue to serve. But if we appointed, so the council is consistent with what we said.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the letter is good?
Well, we got two letters going.
Well, I, I saw them. Are we with the no appointment?
I just wanted to make sure we weren't getting in trouble with, like, setting precedent now, and he goes for the month and thinks it's the whole year again.
Oh, no, 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 I mean, it's, uh, the, our letter says, "This will confirm that we will appoint a successor as of July 1st, 2018."
Okay.
"It is our understanding you will continue to serve as collector between the expiration of your term and that time, pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter 41, section 1." So I don't think there's any.
Okay.
I think, I mean, do you, does that seem reasonably clear?
Okay, yep.
I think it does.
The, the thing is, it seems to me, my, my understanding is we could do it either way. And, um,
We can get from two letters.
And I don't really, you know, personally, I don't really care.
Yeah.
I think, I think this one's fine.
That's just.
There's that one, and then, you know, obviously, it's, we have the ability to appoint. And so that's also very clear.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't, you know, my feeling is, I don't, you know, I don't, if.
Does it leave it open if you wanted to appoint before Ju- July 1?
Uh, technically, we, technically, we could. If we appointed him, it'd be, that becomes more difficult. There's no chance that he's not gonna serve through July 1. Everybody wants him to serve through July 1, so.
Okay.
Um, I suppose technically, this letter works better if, for some reason, we wanted to appoint somebody. Because then, instead of withdrawing and appoint, you know, but that's alternate reality, right? So, shall we go with my letter?
Get this done, yeah.
And if Eloise has any real problems, we'll send another letter next week.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Did I say motion to approve?
I think you did.
All right.
Second.
And you seconded it. So we'll send out my version of the letter. That's what the motion is. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you sign it?
Uh, do I have my version of the letter?
There's a, yes.
Oh, I have both, huh?
Yep. There's one for Dennis as well.
Um, this letter to Richard is an appointment letter. It's not the letter that had my language in it? To appoint you?
It does.
Okay, um.
That's what you added. I can show you.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 I thought, I had, uh.
I have your notes here if you need them.
Yep.
Is this what you wanted?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, what I meant was for this first paragraph to be replaced with.
That marginal?
Yes, with, with the, the second. So let me just mark this one up, okay?
I can fix it after the meeting.
Yep. Yep. So, well, all you're doing is, um, taking this and putting it up there.
Hmm, keep the balance that this is the end of that paragraph.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so you're taking out this.
Yep.
You're moving this up here, okay?
Got it. And that's it?
And that's it.
Got it. Then you saw that, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep, and this, this one is, this one is easy. This one's just voting to appoint him, Dennis, as the tax collector effective July 1st. Motion to approve?
To approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, ATM preparation. I spoke with Barry.
Okay.
Who, um, said that he had no objection to, um, what we proposed last week, which was to, um, start with, uh, the warrant as we have indicated, run through as much as we can on the first night. Um, start the second night with school, um, CPA, and town management study committee.
Now, by school, you mean just the regionalization?
I just mean the regionalization.
The other stuff will be the first night?
The other stuff will be the first night, just like it always is.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll make that clear to Superintendent.
Uh, Barry did feel that he wanted to get all the budget stuff together in the first night, and I said, that's, that's fine. So, um, that, that was one big piece. So now, what do we need to do to get this turkey in flight?
And I did send out an email requesting the summaries from those who didn't have them on there. I will persist on that.
Okay. On the permitting software, there will be, I presume, a period of this next fiscal year in which we will still be using the old software, because obviously, we can't purchase and everything. So, um, in answer to one of the questions as to whether we left the permitting software receipts in place, I think we need to for at least that portion of the year. Okay? So I'll mark. Uh, yes, leave. I think that was the only open question on those revolving funds. Okay. Good, and we do have, I answered my own question here. I wanted to be sure that we had the town hall receipts revolving fund of the $25,000, $25,000. So that, that way, if they start to get, um, funds in, they can, uh, they could pay that part of their salary for the second half of the year, so that's good.
Chris, you never did see regionalization language come yet, have you?
Um, I forwarded what I had, uh, a few days ago, maybe, a week ago.
What would be voted, the actual language?
Well, they haven't actually submitted it to our office, no.
Okay.
But they sent out a draft, and I believe we have a meeting coming up. I want to say next Tuesday night.
Okay. So I think what we want to do at this point is move the school regionalization to the very end of this warrant in terms of just numbers.
Okay.
Again, 'cause we're.
Are we doing a cutoff of where we're gonna start for the second night?
That was.
Yeah.
My thought, so my thought was, and we'll talk about that, what kind of bridge we need. So, we will move 13 to the end, Mary?
It doesn't go to the actual end, because the actual end is the 2018 Ingle town election.
Right.
Right.
So you want right before that, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have an idea in mind if you want regionalization, CPA, and then town administrator? Do you have a certain order?
Sorry, what?
Do you have a certain order that you have in mind? Do you want to go school regionalization, then CPA, then town administrator?
Well, I thought, I wanted to discuss that with, um, the crew here.
I think probably anything to do with the school would be good to have first, in case there's children at home that parents need to get home to or babysitting.
Okay, that's fair, that's fine with me. Next, CPA?
Yep.
Okay. And then the management, all right?
Yep.
And the school articles on the first night are pretty close at the beginning also, aren't they?
Yeah, they were right.
I think they are, okay.
Yeah, they're, they're where they usually are.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Um, and then I think we should, uh, I think we should put a note before those two, those three articles, Mary? Saying that, um, the following, you know, three articles will be considered at the second night of the town meeting and.
For.
Yeah, and, and give the time. Okay?
Yep.
And put that in, you know, maybe in bold. Okay?
Yep.
If I do that, do you want this to go to town council? And do you want town council to come up with CPA language? It's kinda like, they probably have boilerplate stuff. 'Cause we don't have that language yet. That's really the only, the major placeholder that's kicking around.
Yeah, there's, absolutely. It's, and it's up on the CPA page, but.
All right, well, let's try to get that for next, so I can take a look at that, too, on the CPA page. All right? So we don't want to go to council for CPA language, we'll.
Oh, no, okay, but do you want the draft otherwise to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're probably ready, yes.
Because the FinCon needs numbering in order to make, that's how they make their recommendations. They are looking for numbers.
Well, you're gonna have numbers now. Once you make, once you pull those three out, you're gonna have the numbers. You know, once you pull those three out and, um.
Put them at the end?
And, you know, or almost at the end.
Right.
Then you'll have your numbers.
Oh, um, I do remember there was an email from Scott asking us to pull the parking lot repaving. Are we going to consider doing that? Um, because I don't think.
Keith had pulled it. Keith had pulled it.
Yeah, I think it's already pulled.
It's on here.
Is it here?
Yeah, it's on here. It's article 28 right now.
Definitely pulled that.
I looked on the.
Yep, all right.
Well, I can't pull it. I'm waiting for the selection. They said they want to pull it, but yeah, it's on, um, page six.
Yeah, let's pull that.
Pull that.
28 or something.
Yep.
Are there others?
I don't know, is the UTV?
Fire department stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, the UTV.
The UTV, they were looking for a grant, was what he said, but it still needed to be in there.
Mm-hmm.
I think that, I think, wasn't the fire chief gonna meet with the FinCon to talk about this stuff?
Yeah.
So I don't know whether to take it out or?
No. Let's take out the highway, you know, the municipal building parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
And then, I guess, we'll have to leave the others until, uh, there's a determination between FinCon and fire.
Because the pumper truck was supposed to go, too.
It was supposed to go, but be bumped out one year.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So you don't have quite your numbers yet, I guess, Mary, sorry?
Sorry, the headings are helpful.
But we're getting there. And the item on, uh, we've covered the item on the agenda regarding the fiscal year 19 budget request at this point, or there others?
Do you, um, on page eight?
Page eight of?
The draft warrant.
Okay.
The supplemental water supply. There really was no discussion after, you know, from that point forward, supplemental water supply. So that goes on for, and then, um, that's like a fire chief request on the planning board, one, two, three, four. And then the financials, you want to keep them where they are?
Yeah.
Um, if you look at page 12, there's two separate, like, lists of closeouts. One was the finance committee, and the other is from the accountant. The accountant was suggesting, the second one on page 12, is asking that they go back to their original sources, I think, and then the FinCon's asking for them to go back to stabilization. All money to be closed out go to stabilization. Should that be merged into one? Should they remain separate? I'm not even sure if they're talking to one another about agreeing on a master list.
Well, I did talk to them about, um, monies that came out of the, um, the gift accounts, the cap, the capital pay on high and common accounts, should go back to that.
Right.
I had said that, um, with, uh, with respect to anything else, I mean, it could go into stabilization, and they didn't have, they didn't seem to have a problem with that. So that, I think, um, I think that the article is broad enough to the stabilization fund and/or to transfer to another end of appropriation, or to close out to the general fund, or to take any other action relative thereto.
That's June's language.
Okay, then that, that's.
But the one above it is the finance.
Yeah, I, I think let's go with June's language on that, because they can make, you know.
Ah, I see what you're saying.
You can make a motion on the town meeting floor.
To use that header.
That would either be theirs or ours or whatever, okay?
And let them make their recommendation as to.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And then the claim suit settlement authorization, which is at the bottom of page 12.
Mm-hmm.
You, you never really did talk about this. This was taken off the last town meeting warrant, I think.
This is, this is put on by fire?
Well, it is kind of as a result of some fire, ambulance kills.
Right.
But also, she has some property damage type or property type claims that exceed $1,000.
No, I say let's do that. No, we could leave that.
Keep it.
Yep.
$2,500?
No, right now, it's $1,000.
Oh, okay.
And this, this, the motion is, uh, $5,000.
Mm-hmm. $5,000.
And I think let's leave it at $5,000.
Okay.
If people want to talk it down on the floor, they can talk it down on the floor, but we can't talk it up on the floor, so.
Right.
Yes, town council would just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, they can start to take a look at that, because there's not much that's gonna change. Okay? And we're still waiting for the regional budget, and that's the only one that's outstanding, correct?
Right. Okay.
Um, any other business to come before the board, any reports of? Any other business to come before the board? Any reports of board interactions, et cetera?
I do have a meeting, I think I mentioned, on next Monday morning with Dean Tran. And I sent him an email with bullet points about what I, some of the things I want to talk about. And then I'll let you know how it goes.
Great. Great.
Saturday was the first police union
Negotiation?
Negotiation. So that's starting up, nice and short.
Good.
It was just the setting the dates and the rules, so
Ground rules.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, I suspect Jack can have too many big issues, but and you saw that the union approved the settlement and the policy going forward on that grievance. I mean, we'd already voted on everything. We were waiting for them to come back with an acceptance, but they accepted that.
Yeah, and it sounds like they do have a policy in place now
Yep.
Going forward, so it's all
Yep.
All right.
And yes, you can refer this one, Mary, to economic development. Yeah, that's just a letter from the Chamber of Commerce. Yeah, I think I already updated you on, you know, my asking of National Grid again. And, yeah, related the experience with the closing, et cetera. I think those are the things that I had. Yeah.
You ready for a motion to adjourn?
If there's nothing else.
Okay.
Go for it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.